Been a Vice President. Is here. Comanche, this is the 12th of August. It's Comanche, that's it. It's good to be with you here on this February 16th COVID-19 Town Hall update. And it's good to be able to meet with you again. All those on Facebook Live. As we always do, we open up a prayer. We have a President, myself, to give updates. And then our professionals, starting with Dr. Jim and our wonderful health professionals, amazing health professionals frontline and the people that are sacrificing a lot and committed to seeing our nation get through this pandemic as quickly, efficiently, and as great as possible. So without further ado, we'll open up. But appreciate all of our first responders and thank you for all you do. We're appreciative of this moisture as well. So let us go to our Heavenly Father in prayer. I can't be in God, we give you thanks, Lord, for another day of life, another day that we can come and be about the business of our people, Father, bring about change and bring in essential, vital direct services to our people, Father. Lord, we pray that you would use this time for this information and data exchange, Lord, to bless the people in the land. We're thankful for the moisture in which you've sent, Father. Our animals are grateful and our planting season will be great, Father. Many, many more, Father, will join in the sowing process, the principle that you have set forth and placed before us, though. We're thankful for that and we're humbled, Lord, by your ability to call those things that are not as though they are. When you think here, we ask that we can join you in that great work, Father. We pray for the preservation of our people. Lives are at stake, Father, this health pandemic, this health crisis in which you knew all along, Lord, Father, for you are not surprised, you know all things. And we ask that you can grant us your great wisdom, Lord, and knowledge in which to bring bitterment, bring in enhanced lives, Lord, for our people, Lord. And you ultimately will receive the glory. And we thank you again. You give me praise, honor, and glory that's to your name. Again, we're thankful for the moisture. I pray that our citizens all across, Lord, are being mindful of the driving situations, though they may be blessed, Father, and that we afford to be enabled to compete again real soon, Father God. We just thank you, give you praise. In Jesus' name, amen, amen. We see somebody playing in the snow out there. So looking gentlemen, our President of the Navajo Nation is making snowmen. So Mr. President, it is your time.
All right. Well, thank you, Vice President. Yes, what a beautiful day it is here in Winderock, Arizona, and probably most parts of the Navajo Nation. So be careful on the roads, you know, don't rush, give yourself some time, extra time to get to your destination. And what a blessing here in beautiful Winderock, Arizona, your Navajo Nation capital. We come to you every Tuesdays and Thursdays to give you an update on the COVID-19 public health emergency operation. And today we are at 29,283 total COVID-19 confirmed cases here on the Navajo Nation since the start of the pandemic. I haven't received any updates to know if some of our Navajo people are getting reinfected or not. That's something that would be of interest to me, I'm sure of interest to many of you out there. But I know in, on the news, I saw that South Africa, some of those individuals catch one variant and then catch another variant. So there is indication that you can get reinfected by this virus. So it's very important that we continue to wear our masks, social distance, wash your hands with soap and water, hand sanitizer usage, and staying at home as much as you can. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the 1,112 families who've lost their loved ones throughout this pandemic, you know. I know many would say, why do you keep giving us these numbers, President? You know, we're just being transparent with everyone. And we just need to let everybody know what's happening here on the Navajo Nation. And Vice President gives the updates that's happening all around the Navajo Nation. So you're an informed citizen. And being an informed citizen is very powerful so that you can make decisions for yourself and for your family, and positive decisions, we pray. So yesterday, I guess a all-time low for some time, 13 cases in 24 hours. And we haven't seen these numbers since the summer of last year. So your prayers are reaching the Creator and the Creator is blessing us and protecting us throughout these trying times. You know, IXS and Navajo Department of Health will be giving us updates. Department of Dene Education regarding schools, a lot of questions on schools. So we'll be giving you an update. Of course, I said last week, no changes. We are supporting online classes, online courses here on the Navajo Nation. But I know that some schools are starting to reopen and we just don't understand why. Of course, the parents and the teachers and everybody's contacting us saying, hey, you know, we're a sovereign nation, we should be, have the ability to govern ourselves. Yes, I agree. And so, you know, if schools are going to be reopening, if they're reopening today, you know, they'll, they'll see that not many students are going to be there. And our utmost important is to, importance is to keep our people safe here on the Navajo Nation. Vaccination schedules should be going out today on our social media pages, so look out for that. I understand that Nahat Azil facility in Sanders, they were supposed to have a vaccination today that was canceled because of the weather that we're having, the snow and the road conditions. So just to let you know, Sanders was canceled, canceled. And over the weekend, I'd say over 5,000 of our Navajo citizens got, gotten vaccinated. So that's a good thing. That is the reason why we reopened the weekend. 57-hour weekend curfew was set aside so that we can have all seven days to vaccinate as many people as we can. So as of today, well, as of February 12th last week, we haven't get the numbers because of three-day weekend holiday, yesterday President's Day. And what we're trying to do is get all that information so we can present it. But as of February 12th of last week, on Friday, Thursday, we had 90,496 people vaccinated, given a shot. And 21,131 have received their second shot of those 90,000. And that's not counting Friday and that's kind of counting Saturday. So I think we're well over 95,000 at this point. And by this week, we should reach our goal, reach our goal of 100,000 total shots given to our Navajo Nation. You know, we were saying we're going to make a goal of 100,000 by the end of February. I think we're going to hit that this week. So that's great news. And just the outpouring of support, the outpouring of interest in getting the vaccines has been good and all these vaccination events have been successful. So Saturday's visit, we were in Shiprock, Tohatchee, Crown Point, and Gallup. It was very busy and it was great to see many of our younger people now, now 18 and older and 16 and over. So how do you determine which vaccine? 18 and over obviously is Moderna. So if you hear 18 and over, that's usually the Moderna vaccine. If you hear 16 and over, that's usually the Pfizer vaccine. And we got a lot more Moderna than Pfizer because it doesn't, Moderna doesn't have to have those ultra, ultra cold storage. And it's easier to get out to these vaccination places throughout the Navajo Nation, especially the rural residents. So it's great to, to know that we have received 28,000 additional doses just last week alone. So we're, we're wanting to keep that number up, so the percentage up, so we can continue to advocate for more vaccinations for our Navajo people. FEMA and Department of, I'm sorry, Department of Defense have workers here on the Navajo Nation. I visited some in Tubus City. They're helping with the vaccination drives and doing a great job in relieving our Navajo healthcare professionals so they can get some rest, get some family time. And we appreciate all the partners that are helping doing the vaccination drives throughout the nation. And of course, our thank you goes out to all our healthcare workers. Gee, I say that all the time, but it's true, we need to thank them. If you're in line at a vaccination event, just tell them thank you, you know? I mean, you, you'll be waiting, of course, sometimes people don't like to wait, but the wait time is a lot less than when we started. And so they're doing their very best on a daily basis, seven days a week to get the vaccines out. I know there's questions all the time about who can get vaccinated. And it's just, you just got to check up with your healthcare facility. The information that we receive, it'll be on our Facebook page as well for vaccinations this week. And the news about these variants, these different variants is concerning to the Navajo Nation. Right now, we don't have any confirmed cases that we know about on the Navajo Nation of either the South African variant, the Australian variant, or the UK variant. We're going to be doing a lot more testing to see that. And, you know, throughout the United States, the UK variant is anticipated to be the most common one throughout the country. So that's concerning to us. So if you get your shots, don't let down. One, even your second dose, don't let down. You know, I'm, I took off my mask today just to do the video here. I'm outside, I usually double mask. I got my, my, my mask, it could be a surgical mask, it could be a cloth mask. And then if you have a gator or a handkerchief, wear that over it as well, you know? And just, it's, it's good to be safe. It's good to be safe and then not let down. Let everybody know not let down. We're going to also talk about schools in a bit from our Acting Superintendent Patricia Gani, who will give us an update on schools. It's all about accountability, you know? I've said it long before, if schools reopen, we, our position here on the Navajo Nation through the letter from OPVP, Office of the President, Vice President, a resolution from Department of, I'm sorry, the Navajo Nation Board of Education and our council saying online only. And we made that decision for the Navajo Nation. Now, schools start reopening, you have school board members out there that you vote for. And if you feel unsafe in going back to school, you need to let those leaders know. We're going to do, we're going to also hold them accountable here on the Navajo Nation as well. We want to keep people safe. I know all across the country, people are reopening, New Mexico's reopening, but we can't jump the gun. These variants are very dangerous that are out there right now. So we're going to do it safely, gradually. Navajo Nation employees, yeah? Some of you are working at home, some of you are back at your workstation. Half of our Navajo Nation employees have gotten the vaccines and, you know, we're doing our very best, but we also have to provide public services to our Navajo people. CARES Act projects, just real quick, you know, we have assisted 719 families in receiving electricity. 719 families, 665 families by Intuay Cruz, 54 families from neighboring utility crews and Hémez Mountain Electric Co-op and many others. So those individuals have electric power and we appreciate Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, Dr. Pearl Yellman, Deputy Manager Rex Koontz. Gosh, there's just so many people that helped in this process and appreciate 24th Navajo Nation Council working together to get power. Wish we could do more, we could have done more, but because of the internal deadlines, we weren't able to, to include many more. But, you know, keep in mind, there might be some federal infrastructure dollars coming down from Washington DC in the near future. Off-grid solar, 202 homes needed house wiring, 43 homes right now, house wiring under construction, 159 homes, house wiring completed. And 40 home, 40 of those homes belong to our veterans. And, and we are also tracking the solar projects for the nation which we allocated CARES Act funds to. So if you get a chance, look at our report on our social media pages. It'll give you specific details on how many people overall, electricity, water line, cisterns, septic tanks, solar, and other projects are mentioned in that report. For the hardship assistance, you know, Office of the Controller has that information, you know, it was delegated to the Office of the Controller. So if you have any questions, they have an 800 number, they're working, they chose a firm, Baker Tilly, to work with. So if you have questions, it's on them, you know? It's fiscally oversight is with the Office of the Controller. So some of you are asking, is this going to be reopened or I'm checking up on application? Please check with the Office of the Controller, she, they have that information. Some good news this past week, and I'll end with this, the Biden-Harris White House, we had a lot of meetings with the new administration and asking them for support. That's how we were able to secure the 28,000 additional doses on top of what we get every week. Good job to the healthcare workers, good job to you for wanting to get your vaccination done. And as long as we keep the number, the percentage high of vaccines being given, it'll be easier for us to advocate for more doses. Major disaster declaration was signed by the President of the United States, brings in resources, mental health resources to the Navajo Nation. And so, and, and that's how we got the staff to come and help with a lot of these vaccination distribution, vaccination events throughout the nation. Tubus City last week received fiber optics, first time, a large community. You just imagine the first large community like that didn't have high-speed internet until getting fiber optics to, to them. And appreciate the Hopi Nation leaders for allowing us to go through their lands to connect fiber to the community. Tubus City is also, I'm sure it'll be available to Moncopi right across the street there at the Hopi, Hopi Tribe Tribal Community. At one point, we were 95, 94% of our vaccines given to our Navajo people. And this week, it's around, I'd say about 70, maybe 80% now with the new updates because we got a big shipment, that 28,000 doses to the Navajo Nation. That'll end our report here in our nation's capital, Winderock, Arizona. Beautiful day, snow coming down, prayers were answered. Thank you for the prayers from everyone throughout
Morph and the opportunities still exist here. We're mining through all those. And so this pandemic has magnified the issues we faced here for decades on this nation. All the health disparities when compared to national norms are there. We're advocating at the highest levels to bring about necessary change. And hence the quality of life of our citizens. And you all don't need to know this or be reminded, but Indian country has been hit hard in this pandemic. So, but we appreciate all that have continued to work and be diligent about this here. Again, from the top down, from President and opposite of President Vice President, all those that are working behind the scenes, we appreciate them. Lastly, just real quick, my numbers here for the state of Arizona. Seven thousand nine hundred, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred forty. Total positive cases since March of last year, one year ago. With total death fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-one. This shows you the brevity of what the pandemic has done in Arizona. New cases, we've seen this continue to fall and decrease, but that's the thing. We've seen as high as ten thousand a day, right? Now, Arizona, new cases as of yesterday, one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two with three new deaths to report. A deeper drill down on that in Arizona, Apache County, right here. Yeah, Winderock and the surrounding area, ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-five positive cases with a total of three hundred and fifty deaths. With one new case to report, so wow, that's awesome. Praise the Lord, thank you, Jesus, all of those things. We'll give credit where credit is due. With one new case to report and no new deaths, so again, that's a very, let's tout it and blow our horns for that one. Navajo County, fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two positive cases, total deaths four hundred and seventy-four. With twenty-nine new cases to report and no deaths, so yeah, that's a good thing. Coconial County rounding out our Arizona contingent of counties here that are on the Navajo Nation. Sixteen thousand and eighty-one, total deaths three hundred and two and thirty-eight new cases. So, New Mexico, two more states to go, and then I'll bring Dr. Jill Jim here, she'll give her updates as well. San Juan County and Mexican County are still observing high numbers here. We look forward to maybe one day seeing our food and drink establishments and restaurants opening. But right now, they're still closed only curbside, I guess, for that here, curbside pickup. And the, I guess, all of the close contact recreational facilities remain closed to this point. McKinley County, McKinley County is eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one. Nineteen cases to report, four hundred and twenty-seven deaths here. And we are looking at getting those numbers to start to decrease, but they're still up there high. San Juan County, thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five with twenty new cases. And four hundred and eight total deaths again in the last year. And we are seeing those numbers again flatten and starting to come down. And rounding out the states that touch the Navajo Nation, Utah. Three hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six total positive cases since last March. With one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six total deaths here. Four hundred and sixty-two new cases, and their numbers continue to flatten and increase here, praise the Lord. And two new deaths to report. So there you have it, great, well, I'm sorry, San Juan County in Utah. One thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one total positive cases, thirty-six deaths to report throughout the year. So that rounds out all of our states that touch the Navajo Nation. So we appreciate you, continue to pray for you all and the Navajo Nation and the land and the United States and the world. And so our prayers are being heard, so we appreciate you all in this here. So without further ado, Dr. Jill Jim is next in our sleeve of health professionals. So we continue to appreciate her great work here as she contributes to the cog here, the mechanism, the leadership here, the central government. So our prayers continue to be with you, Dr. Jim, in everything that you do, appreciate your leadership here as well. So ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Jill Jim, the Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. Take it away, Dr. Jim.
Thank you, Vice President, good morning to you too as well. I keep thinking it's a Monday, but it's a Tuesday. So I wanted to welcome all the listeners for joining us this afternoon, it's still morning. And I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm just thankful for these updates that we regularly do for everyone across the Navajo Nation around COVID. Just to stay up to date with a little bit of information would be helpful. So hopefully you share some of the prevention messages that I'm going to share with you guys today. So this is a regular update that I usually do. So although there are vaccines that are available and individuals have been vaccinated across the Navajo Nation. We encourage everyone to continue to wear a mask and also social distance and wear wash hands. And also disinfect areas, common areas around your home as well. So just to let everyone know, it's still very important, no matter where you're at, to practice this. While you're running errands, while you're at the grocery store, while you're at work, at home. Also when other individuals are visiting your home. And if they're going to be there longer than fifteen minutes, they should be wearing a mask inside your home. Just because you have a family member that's visiting you and you might trust them. But if they're from another household, it's very important to still wear your mask. Also at work too, if you're going to be in an enclosed conference room or even if you're traveling a quite short period or time. If you need to commute with another person, those precautions are still very important. So anything in an enclosed area is still very critical in making sure that you have proper ventilation and also still wearing your mask. Getting vaccinated doesn't stop you from getting COVID as well. So individuals need to still take those precautions because you can still test positive. And if you do, you might be less sick, everyone is different. But what you might not be aware of is if you are asymptomatic, you could still infect other individuals and transmit COVID to another person. So it's very important to wear a mask. Some of the new CDC guidelines are out and this is the wearing the proper medical procedure mask. Also making sure that you have another cloth over it, so you can double mask. And to reduce any potentially infectious aerosols are decreased. I guess when you have a tight fitted mask, that makes sure you have enough breathing room as well. So improve your fit well, you can do a nylon covering with a mask fitter as well. And it's interesting, everyone has found ways to do their own cloth mask. But now you need another layer of a disposable mask as well to help with prevention of especially the new variants that are out there. That are from other countries. And now we have reports of these homegrown variants. So just be aware that we need to all take precautions, doesn't matter which variant. But eventually, yes, they're being detected everywhere. And so it's very important to still take these precautions. Also, the numbers are down, but when the numbers are down, people let up and we need to not do that. We still need to make sure that you're monitoring any symptoms related to COVID. It could be flu, it could be related to allergies. But just know that you still can need to take those precautions as well. Also for those that have tested positive, we just need to be sensitive around these individuals. I know that either these individuals might have gone through a lot with their disease and symptoms. They might be asymptomatic as individuals, but making sure that we are treating each other well. Either when we're sick or not, just making sure there is no shame and shaming other individuals when they do test positive. But we should be able to just simply also, I guess, be cognizant of their, the sickness that they're going through. And just make sure that we are not imposing any sort of unnecessary behavior towards individuals that have tested positive. So just keep that in mind, making sure that we don't shame others is important to making us Navajo strong. And then also in the workplace as well, and when you are sick, please stay home. Monitor your health and also practice distancing in your work environment. Also avoid sharing objects, cleaning regularly. I know that the Navajo Nation employees returned to work last week for some of the non-essential workers that haven't been working. Just know that there are safety protocols for the Navajo Nation employees. If you have any questions, go to the Navajo Nation reopening webpage, there's an updated guideline for employees. Also, we encourage businesses, in the last public health order, we ask businesses to report their exposures to the portal. So we can properly get contact tracing and case management and testing to assist employees. There might be individuals that are falling through the cracks, so if you're not getting a call from contact tracers. Do your best with making sure that you are getting tested. I know that frontline workers and essential workers are out there in the frontline and are at more risk for COVID nineteen. So however, you can take all the precautions that we've been asking and keeping that on top of your list every single day. To take these precautions will help prevent COVID nineteen. But reporting the exposures is very important. Also, we know the vaccine is here today, it snowed. We're thankful for the snow and the blessing of giving us moisture. But I know that there are some vaccine events that were canceled today. But just ensure in the future, there will be regular updates. So go to the Navajo Department of Health webpage to the COVID nineteen section. But also, we encourage everyone to be patient. I would like to suggest if you know elders or individuals that might have a harder time getting vaccinated, even when they're high risk. Or spiritual leaders or other individuals, you know your communities very well. Find a way to see if you can bring them to a vaccine event or contact the hospital or the CHR program or some other avenue. We do have the nine-two-eight, eight-seven-one, seven-zero-one-four number that's still operating through this pandemic that we're still in. And you can always leave a message and even tell us that there's an elder that hasn't been vaccinated. And they need, that he or she needs assistance getting to the hospital to get vaccinated. I mean, those are just some effort that you can do on your end, any way to get a population out there, especially those that are high risk, that are older. That may not have access to the vaccine drives that are happening in the communities. I just hope that we are capturing everyone and we know that not all elders are being reached right now. So just please work and understand with us that we are still in phase one B. But it's our job as citizens to know and how to help our elders as well. And so, and when you do get vaccinated, you're not immediately immune to, I guess, to some extent against coronavirus. So you really need to be taking all the full protection, as I mentioned, because it will take a number of days. And also, it's very important for everyone to get their second shot as well. So please make every effort to take your, get your second shot. I know some people might have traveled. Quite a ways to get their first dose because there wasn't available possibly in the metro areas or suburban areas off the reservation that you've been, that you live, currently live. And you came down to the reservation. Please don't miss your second shot, make every effort to get your second dose. Because it's very important that it will help against the coronavirus to some extent. And then to the new variants that are around. So everyone, no matter what, if you got vaccinated or not, still need to wear masks, avoid unnecessary travel. Wash hands, avoid close contact with others as much as you can. And the more vaccines that we are putting in the arms of citizens here on the Navajo Nation. We're protecting not only your community, but also yourself. So immunity is very important. And so we don't know to what extent the vaccines are possibly contributing to the decrease in cases. But we're thankful that there is a decrease in cases. But we also want to reiterate that although the numbers are headed in the right direction. Please do not social gather, please do not take off your mask and all the other stuff that we advise you not to do. Just for the sake of protecting yourself, your family and your community members. As I had mentioned about the new variants, they're out there, they will have a different characteristic as well. So just be mindful that to the extent that these new variants could spread faster. But individuals could be less ill. So this really depends, so we just need to be really aware that these precautions that we've been saying continually do it. I know this information I'm sharing is something that we reiterate, but I know on an everyday basis. We are not living in a normal life that we have lived over a year ago. But in the pandemic, yes, it can be stressful. We need to find ways to relieve this stress and also make sure we have a good mental health and physical wellbeing. And this includes taking care of your emotional health, finding ways to talk to somebody. We do have our mental health hotline as well. If you don't know where the number is, you can call the nine-two-eight, eight-seven-one, seven-zero-one-four number as well. You can exercise as well and enjoy the snow that we have today. Make sure that you eat healthy, avoid alcohol use and drugs. And then take time to unwind and do activities and then talk to others. And also consider doing this safely without any sort of social distancing that's considered a close contact. And also the safest place is at home in order to stop the spread. And we can all do our job and our role to do this. And I think everyone, we have gone this far and I think we're all capable of doing it. So although. Thank you to all the listeners and I'll give time over to Captain Johnson for the Navajo Area IHS Report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. I really appreciate the opportunity yet again to provide some information here. This is Captain Brian Johnson, serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director at Navajo Area Indian Health Service in St. Michael's, Arizona. And I work beside Ms. Rosalyn Sewell, who is the Area Director, along with Dr. Christensen, who is our Chief Medical Officer. All of these individuals have been very involved throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic and will continue to be involved. So again, we just appreciate the opportunity just to share a few comments. Of course, we continue to work with all of our tribal partners, including the Navajo Nation. We continue to work with the Office of President and Vice President and as well as the Tribal Council delegates. Who are also vital to this process of COVID nineteen prevention and response. And how we best address the issues that we've been dealing with over time. So we do thank them certainly for all of their help along the way. Of course, we continue to focus our efforts most recently on the COVID nineteen vaccinations. As has been discussed on this particular Facebook session and in previous sessions as well. We know that the COVID nineteen vaccine, whether we're talking about the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, they're very effective. And so it's, I'm glad we have this tool to work with so that we can all be vaccinated. And hopefully to help achieve what we refer to as herd immunity. The more people in our communities that we get vaccinated, of course, then the safer it makes each one of us. Whether we're talking about in the same family or our friends or just other individuals that we are frequently around. What I do impacts others and what you do impacts others around you. And so I can't stress enough just how important it is to get the vaccine and make sure that you get two doses. And then as time moves on, there will likely be additional vaccines approved, at least for emergency use. But for now, we still continue with the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. So again, we continue to work with all of our, I guess, sister facilities. When I, when I talk about that, I'm talking about Chin Lee and Crown Point and Cayenta and Gallup. Sheprak, Winslow, Fort Defiance, Sage Memorial, Tuba City and Utah Navajo Health System. When I, when I mention all of these different facilities and organizations. These are all the facilities that comprise the local healthcare system here on Navajo. And so I always try to comment that we are in continuous conversation. Whether that is between each of those facilities, sharing information back and forth and what's working and what's not working. In terms of improving the customer experience and patient care. Or whether we're working directly with the Navajo Nation Health Command. And we do attend and continue to attend and participate in, in daily conference calls, televideo sessions. Just to make sure that we're on the same page of where we're headed. And of course, I also just like to mention, as I did the last session as well. We are actually doing very well here on the Navajo Nation in terms of the healthcare system coming together and working with the public. Working with the legislative staff with Navajo Nation, the Office of President and Vice President. We're still, when I talk about IHS and all of the tribal health organizations here. We're still actually faring very well in terms of how we're doing in terms of vaccine distribution and vaccine administration. And we've actually, we actually know the Indian Health Service nationally is rating very highly when compared to states. And other territories and large metropolitan areas, the agency is doing very well. I think Navajo Nation should certainly be proud because that's a big part of why IHS at the national level is doing well in this capacity. Is that we're all working together. And as we receive vaccine, I just wanted to give everybody kind of an idea of how this works. Again, we've mentioned in past sessions that there's not enough vaccine as we stand. And we know that how this is working is vaccine is being produced or manufactured as each day goes along. And so. So we do not have, have seen this for its local republic seen just waiting. Our beginning with, we're dealing with vaccine to us. How much vaccine will be made available to us, whether it's Pfizer or Moderna. And then we use that information to plan the best we can and quickly as possible. To, so that we can get the vaccine clinics stood up. So that we can make sure our facilities receive the distributions that they need. And as we move along, we are pushing the vaccine out very quickly. And getting it to the healthcare providers, so they in turn can get it to our patients. And so I just wanted to kind of give everybody a viewpoint or perspective on that of how that's working. And we're going to continue to push hard to make sure we're doing what we can. As President Nez had mentioned earlier, over ninety thousand individuals here in the Navajo Nation. Have received their first dose of vaccine with an estimated number of over twenty-one thousand that's received their second dose. Now, the numbers are likely larger than that, we're still gathering information from over the weekend. Where there were several events going on and we'll continue to pull those information or those data points together. So that we can continue to share those, we want the public to be aware of how many vaccinations we've been able to administer as a healthcare system. So we, so we just want to make sure we're transparent in reporting that information to the extent possible. You know, and again, I just want to reiterate that in terms, if you want to protect yourself and your family. Back, you know, vaccine, COVID nineteen vaccination is one of the most safe and most effective ways to keep you and your family safe. As well as those others who may be around you. We know that these vaccines are ninety-four or ninety-five percent effective. Which is very, it's a very high effectiveness rate when looking at vaccines. So we're very fortunate in that way. But one thing I want to mention as, as the, as we're seeing today with the weather. We, we know that we set up schedules and we try our best to schedule events and to keep them scheduled if at all possible. And we know with today's weather and possibly additional weather this week, we may have to make some adjustments. There's already some adjustments being made to some of the vaccine, some of the scheduled events to give the vaccine. So I just want to make sure that folks understand and please be patient with us. We want to make sure people are safe and if roads are hazardous, if the temperatures are bitterly cold. We want to make sure that folks are safe and not setting out in the cold for a long time as we're trying to get to them waiting in line. So we're trying to be very careful with that. So please, if you have questions about whether or not a vaccine event is continuing. Please call our, you know, one of your, your local healthcare facility to find out or if there's been any changes. So that's, that's, that's very important. The other thing that I'll mention this real quickly, and this has been touched on many times. Is that we all know that, that the vaccine is safe and it's effective. But we also know that we still are going to need to follow those protocols, the social protocols. Again, when we talk about washing your hands, wearing a mask and watching your distance from one another. These three items continue to be important and they actually work with the vaccine to make sure people are protected. So we still need to follow these social practices. I'll tell you, I experienced over the weekend, I stopped by a certain grocery store, basically in the Gallup region. And unfortunately, while I was in, in that facility. I noticed people standing two feet from one another, right next to each other, groups of people, large groups. And I noticed in line that folks are not separating and maintaining distances of six feet as we were earlier in the pandemic. My concern is that individuals are getting too comfortable with the number of decreasing cases. It is true that the case numbers are decreasing, but we have to be diligent in, in continuing to monitor. And continuing to follow these practices that will protect all of us. So please make sure to educate those around you, your family members, to continue to protect themselves, even if they've been vaccinated. We still need to wear a mask, watch our distance, and then wash our hands, as has been stated before. Lastly, I just wanted to go ahead and I've commented in the last couple of sessions without going into a whole lot of specific details. It's been mentioned that there are variants of the COVID-19 that are causing a lot of concern nationally, internationally, globally, and it is important. But for now, the main thing to know is that there are scientists and there are doctors who are monitoring these things. And we are working to incorporate our testing to see if any of these variants that seem to be in some cases easier to transmit between individuals or easier to spread. And so it's, we don't know a whole lot about them at this point. They're being studied very quickly and will continue to be studied. And this is something that viruses do. They do mutate and they do change. And this is, this is a local thing within nature. So there, I just wanted the public to know that there are individuals. We get a lot of questions about what are you doing about the variants that we're hearing about? And basically, what we do is keep, keep people informed of what we're seeing locally. There are national and international experts that are watching and monitoring. And we will participate and are in some cases participating in making sure our testing includes testing for some of these variants. So just wanted the general public to know that that is happening. I'm going to go ahead and stop there, but I do appreciate the time. And I just wish everyone well out there. And I want to thank again the Navajo Nation leadership for providing this venue and others to share information with the public. And if this, pass the time over to Ms. Who is presently the Acting Superintendent of Schools with the Navajo Nation Department of the Navy Education. And she's going to provide some information from a school or educational perspective I care about Navajo Nation. So Ms. Gani, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Captain Johnson. Good morning, everyone on the call, President, Vice President, all other Division Directors, and most importantly, our Navajo Nation citizens, school leaders and teachers, parents who are on the call this morning for Navajo Nation's updates. Today, I was asked to provide some updates on school reopening on Navajo Nation. And as I was introduced, I am Pat Gani, Acting Superintendent for Department of the Navy Education in Wunderup. So this morning I will provide the updates based on the important topic of school reopening. As you may know, as of January 21st, we have our Federal Administration of Biden-Harris who issued a, an executive order which directs Department of Education with United States Department of Education and also the Health and Human Services to provide guidance in how to safely reopen schools and what that means for the operation of schools in this time of COVID-19 and other programmatic services such as childcare and institutions of higher learning as well. In addition to that, the executive order called for a data collection in terms of studying and looking closely at how school closures have impacted student learning across the board. As you know, data is key in really coming up with those strategies that are meaningful and addressing the issues. As you may see by these two priorities within this executive order, we are very much developing how we respond as a nation to COVID-19 and school closures. And then also for school reopening as well, as things are developing and changing. We, in the most recent past, have not had to make such a plan. And so an absence of information and data as to how a school closure of this magnitude and extensive timeframe impacts student learning, loss of learning, ability to recoup what has been lost and for a safe return to a school setting. We're developing those information as things happen. And so with this executive order, Mr. President Biden vowed to reopen schools within the first hundred days of his administration. I want folks to note that that hundred days of his new administration runs well into late April 2021. So I just wanted to paint that timeline. So as here on Navajo Nation, as we prepare for school reopening, I want to assure our constituents that we are looking to the guidance from science and our local data. In addition to that, looking at information from Center for Disease Control, CDC. So please make note that until Friday, February 12th of 2021, CDC issued a 35-page guidance in terms of how schools can reopen safely. So I noted that things are developing as, as the days come. So within that guidance, we have five mitigation strategies that CDC stands by. And the more effective for school reopening and the more of these strategies working in tandem is what CDC is providing guidance for. First of all, that is the proper mask-wearing by all involved, students, staff, teachers, and other school employees. Maintaining six feet apart for a maximum extent period of time possible. This provides for the expectation that schools, when they are moving forth with reopening, will cohort students. In addition to that, there is heavy guidance for frequent handwashing. And then also frequent cleaning of the school facilities. And in addition to that is contact tracing, immediate contact tracing whenever there is a report of exposure in a school setting. So these are the basic five elements that CDC provides guidance for in how to safely reopen schools. And the more of these pieces that the school adopts with sincerity and consistency, there is safety in the measures for reopening schools. I must note that within this guidance, there is caution from CDC that schools should base their decisions on school-specific factors, such as taking into account the local needs, local data, and stakeholder input. And that points to really looking at our Navajo Nation local health information, the number of cases that have been reported amongst students, teachers, and staff, and then the school's experience with their safe reopening. So with that, I want to have this segue to Navajo Nation's schools reopening plan, which has been adopted and approved by Navajo Nation Board of Education. On a weekly basis, from Department of the Navy Education, we do host a school leadership meeting where all of this information and other resources are communicated and pushed out through school leaders across Navajo Nation. We have been pleased that we have had consistent attendance from our border towns, superintendents, and principals as well as the nation conversates around how to safely reopen schools. So at this time, I want to bring our attention to the approved Navajo Nation School Reopening Plan. We are currently in status zero, which is the red phase here. And this is based on looking at the local health information as you have heard and as has been shared by Dr. Jill Jim and her team members in the weeks past. We are at an extensive community spread risk. And for that, we maintain shelter in place through executive orders from Navajo Nation President's Office. And with that, we do issue guidance for school volume to not exceed 25% maximum capacity threshold in any classroom space where students are being educated. And the type of instruction that is made available within the status zero red phase is virtual learning. You will see when we do move along the continuum, we will remain in virtual instruction. And the first opportunity that we would have as a nation based on the current reopening plan for some sort of an in-person learning format comes until status two, which is the yellow phase for hybrid. And then also for the status green, status three is a hybrid model as well. So you see that Navajo Nation is taking every precaution to be sure that we do not immediately move back into a full face-to-face learning for reasons that have been stated by previous presenters this morning, taking careful guidance from all sources, most importantly, our local information. You may see that other surrounding counties, other surrounding districts may be in different phases or may also be working off of their own counties and districts and states reopening gating criteria. But I just want to clarify and assert that Navajo Nation's plan is based on the local health information. So this is a plan that has been made available to all school leadership through our weekly communications. So with that, our current focus and initiatives at Department of the Navy Education relate to several pieces. First of all, we are supporting vaccination of school employees. You will have seen in the most recent three weeks that we have as a nation availed vaccination to all who wish to participate here on Navajo Nation. So please continue to take advantage of those vaccination pods that are continuing to be held through the weekends as Navajo President has shared, and then also Captain Johnson as well. We are assisting BIE-funded schools with finalization of Phase Two and Phase Three of school reopening plans. We here on Navajo Nation have several types of schools that exist. Public schools within the three states of Utah, Arizona, and New Mexico. We also have the BIE-funded schools, which are BIE-operated, and also tribally controlled grant schools, some private parochial schools, charter schools as well. So there are many types of oversights that we are working with. But most importantly, we are from DODI looking to provide assistance to the BIE-funded schools in the completion of the specific school's Phase Two, which is hybrid learning. And then also Phase Three, which is a return to face-to-face learning. So there is a need to complete those at this time. Navajo Nation Tribal Consultation Team has been comprised of representation from DODI, in addition to Office of the President, members of Hess Committee members, also Ms. Priscilla Manny Lito, who is Board Chair of Navajo Nation Board of Education. In addition to that, we also have representation from Department of Justice here within Navajo Nation. The intent here is to review the public schools off the nation, on the nation as well, their review of school reopening plans. You will have noted that we are asking for certain criterions to be met and paying careful attention to the local data. And so Navajo Nation wants to have a hand in terms of reviewing these plans and giving approval for schools for their reopening when that time does permit. I do want to make special note that we do already have currently some decisions that are in place. President in his introductory remarks today spoke about Navajo Nation Board of Education's decision to remain online for second semester. So here I notate it, the Resolution Number 691, as approved by Navajo Board of Education in support of online learning only at this time. In addition to that, we have had Navajo Nation Council approve legislation. In addition to that, we have had Navajo Nation Council approve legislation.
Yat'eh, shik'ehro shadne'eh. Sheh di kudo paf'el yah fahler deset ne'eh. May de'shki'ezniin ch'la'torichini basis chi'. Aro, tashch'e'eh ya, dash'na'lotcha bana'ha dash'ch'e'eh. Ch'otis ahol ye'ne'eh, a'rey es'na'sha. Ko, aro, k'j'eh'eh nda'ilk'oh eh. Han ne'eh nih'ch'e'eh nde'eh i'do ba'ach'eh ni'tzen. Shik'ehro shadne'eh, k'j'eh'ah na'ta'se yopkesi. Ak'oh altsa'hi eh ya di, eh'yehe'eh'eh'eh. Ko, tch'odoh yas'ndleni ko, nih'ch'e'eh'ah da'li'ay ba'ach'eh ni'tzen. Do'a kui'ch'e'eh ba'be'niyeh'tod'izzen. Aro eh ya, di'rik'os nas e'ts'adap'edit'nini eh'ath'inahlni. Konde, hashine'eh la eh ya, k'odoh a'andal'neh, noh, ba'ya'tch'i. Do'shin ah'oh sh'ten'ts'ghin'la a'andal'neh i it'eh'eh. Do' nas go'ne'eh, nij'eh'ah yo'op'lah't'ahi it'eh'eh. Na'pik'iyas'ch'eh do ban ts'ah'ak'esi. Na'na'pik e'ashtik do ban tsa'ak kesi. Cho'eh itse'eh la'at do'le. Chala e'ba' laganek ech'oh ilno e'ya we gotta stay cautious of our reopening. We may have the vaccine, you may receive the vaccine, but does not mean that you continue to travel of your whereabouts. Aro di'izet nahan lni'i gi'edefne'hat ne'. A'ahl a'eh. Aro bitre'eh cha'inof nido bitre'eh ba'achet'eh donos. Cho'eh ko'e'e ba'nan hinikha. Aro di'nda'eh nta'tech nish go'ne'eh i'gi e'ya di'domo tse'na'at domo biskani'eh ta'tech nish. Aro da'ntz'ago she'ich lo'hot'eh o'tcha da'a'andal ne'eh. Da'ahno da' cho'eh ko'e'e a'basit ch'ido. Ah, nacha'altshin nlini basit. Ch'eh bini'na' di online virtual hybrid learning de'chneni. E'ati be' da'innis akon. Nacha'altshin do ba'da'altcha enlini ba'cha'ni'tzen ona. Kudoba' nan hinikha. Ahoshtin a'anal ya'be' da'do' ne'eh la' da'ahno cho'eh ko'e. Ye'go ah ntsahak kes do'nahat'ani salaw itte'eh shik edo shid ne'eh. Aro hashine'eh la' di'bel'la'ash'tla'i ni'tle. San a'nihis tui ch'el ke'ch ke'ni'tle ni'. A'ani ye'go. Ah, nih ch'eh jehgas del do' nih ch'eh ntsak kes do'hot'eh go' i'ila. Chala di'oh i'ug on'tsi'ich kes. We endured a year of loss, isolation, fear. Hashine'eh la'oh e'y ahon wade'sundat anch'eh itno'la anch'eh dahat'ih ka. Hashine'eh la'eh ye' nih chi'at'ih naz a. Be'de'il zir akon deh oh sh'ehhot'eh ro'le. Cho'eh kudoh nih nat'ani a'kui ch'eh itta anch'eh ne'. Bitre'eh cha'in nido bitre'eh ntski'et'eh ne'eh. Cho'eh hot'a e' kudoh nih nat'chen elke'na' naz la. A'ani shin'eh hashine'eh la'eh kon bel'la'ash'tla'i. Enlini kon hitz'apik ke'eh dahasti. Kondeh, cho'a nido ba'ash'tet'eh nit'edah n'teh. Kondeh, nas go'eh. Bol a'ro e'ni'tzen. Cho'a'ani ch'eh be' da'akui li'ado a'ani ch'eh. Be'na'achin nit'chino. Yat e shik edo shid ne'eh. Akko' di' hashin ts'agot si'ra itz'n ntsak kes ye' da'anihi. Cho'eh ko'e'pet'eh nit'le. E'ajeh izeh il'ene' danlini izeh ne'kha'adanlini. Ajeh la'ye' da'ani. Akko' cho'eh ajeh ba'elke'ndenno' tahi'eh ko'e. Nih ch'eh ischan i'do llihl od'acheyda bitre'eh hat'atzeh go. Be'chat'chahi'ahhot'eh le' shik edo shid ne'eh. Akko' di' ko'e Navajo Nation Division of Behavioral and Mental Health de'chni. Ize'el ina'ghaja dene'be' ina'hojyon salaja. Cho'eh ajeh e' di'hashin ts'agom nih hin'eh il'aa'i. E'hashine'eh la' di'bijeh'om non'enlini ajeh. Bik'eh'eh di' da' do' ntsi'ich kes. Aro nih ch'eh ol'ich nih ch'eh ot'la'ahl a'at'eh do'ahl an'ta'teh nit'le. Cho'eh adet'zodis zen do'cha'te'zodis zen da'cha'ani. Cho'eh hot'a t'eh'om nahas'ago cho'eh hot'a. Be'bitre'eh chat'oh nido be'et'chit'eh dahat'eh ne'eh do ban ts'et'kes. Cho'eh hot'a' a'ya'tat ch'eh. Aro di' izeh bahaz'li'hat'ni'igi. Oh i'uk at'ndle'eh nas et'jin. Demili'ajeh akon ne'eh la' e' di'ahlahat'eh ba'ata'asti. Aro na'jinno' ahla' demili'ajeh ek'at'ahl ch'eh'eh. Na'ch'eh go'elke'eh be'ba'ata'asti akko' e'ba'achehh ni'tzen. Aro ala'la'at'eh daynot nish izeh il'ene' no'chni. Ize'el e'ber nahas'ago nacha' daynot nish nih ch'ido ntschaga'oh ch'eh'eh. Oh i'ug oben'an nish elke'eh dahana'ah. A'ani e'eh la' do' deitigo'oh ajeh. Nih ch'eh nta'al'go'ani ye'go nan nish'eh o'teh. Oh i'uk kon izeh il'ene' izeh ne'kha'adanlini nacha' nan nish'ta'bah'rah akon deh. Cho'eh e'ya la' do' ben'an nish itte'eh akko' ba'achehh nos zen do' ba'achehh nos zen do' bitre'eh cha'inof ne'. Ize'el juno' shen'ol nish'ta'dahol ye. Akko' ghon ts'ago e'ya kudoh. Ga'ne'eh enlini kudoh nih chre'eh ha'nanal'ya do'le akko'. Aro di'ch'eh ap'etsak kes. Cha'ni'igi hot'a. Be'ba' bije'el la'ne'it'le do' bije'el ch'eh'ya de'il ch'eh. Hashine'eh la'go a'ani do' bra'ben de'chneni do' hajeh'oh cha'te'edah. Cho'eh cho'eh do' be'da'innis'eh o'teh. Akko' aro nih zar'ana'ndle'eh i'be' da'adoh shisha'eh do'oh. Do'oh ch'eh nida. Cho'eh hot'a'ndan nih ch'eh itne'etsch'ah hazar' enlini bahast'ch'eh. Do'a'zar' yach'eh ch'eh'eh dah dene' do'ek'eh di'ina'ghavo do' tzotzi'eh dah. A'da e'ha'ka'and'oh al'wo'el. Cho'eh hot'a'ya'tat ch'eh itne'eh shik edo shid ne'eh. Eh shen'eh ba'acheh nos zen. Do' be'na'achin no'ch'in. Be'ah, be'et'ah akhul li'ado be'cha' nos zen. Do' en'ago et'ach'eta'ahzi'el keset'oh i' a'kui ch'eh hot'a. Ba'nan hinikha. Eyo danhinit nini ben'a danch'edit ne'. Akko' she'ekon ts'ago kudoh ha'nanas'it'oh le'ado izeh el'ene' tsalaw ts'oda danlini. E'eh'oh ch'eh'eh da'danch'eh ne'. The last important thing I'd like to share is a random of acts of kindness. Cho'eh hashin ts'ago. Eyo'oh ho'ne'eh do' elch'eh na'amnish. Cho'eh ko' adidi' chahit'ah di'zich'ipi'ye' cho'eh hot'eh. Eyo' ch'eh cho'eh nido ach'ah'has'ntzen do' elch'ezzen zeno'. Cho'eh ajeh itne' his'ka'akoh. Be'et'ah akhul li'ashik edo shid ne'eh. Ghon ts'ago e' kudoh nih ch'eh ha'nanas'it'oh le. Do'na'acheh'eh da'its'eh no't'aa'i ch'eh'eh.
Um, I think we will go ahead and um present. Um, thank you, um, Dr. Fowler for um sharing your words and um. As COPE, uh, we were asked to share an update as well. I'm gonna go ahead and um yield the floor to Hannah Sein.
Thank you, Sonia. Yat e ben'eh. She'eh Hannah Sein Yanisha. Community Outreach and Patient Empowerment Benash Nish. It's really nice to have this opportunity just to share some brief updates. And we're, you know, really grateful to the leadership for affording us some time to share with you all. So just to provide a really brief overview of COPE. We're a nonprofit organization that's um based in Gallup, but works closely across Navajo Nation in our partnership with Navajo Nation in the Department of Health and the programs such as the Navajo Nation CHR Program, the Navajo Nation Epidemiology Center, and others, as well as the health facilities across Navajo Nation. And we're really fortunate to have a longstanding collaboration that really started back in two thousand nine. And so it's really been this strong collaboration that has built the foundation for some of the activities that we've been able to work on in collaboration with our partners over the past year or so. So to just provide a, a brief overview of our vision, one of the things that we feel is really important is that the community is providing the feedback and, and driving the work that we're doing. And that's because we really believe that the power to overturn longstanding health inequities lies inherently within native communities themselves. And by really listening and learning from the community, we're able to work collaboratively in the areas to address, you know, some of these challenges by leveraging those community strengths. So, um, early on last year, there were, you know, particular areas that we started to provide support in. And this was really a reflection of the leadership and guidance from Navajo Nation through the Incident Command Structure and our partners within the communities and health facilities, really trying to address the areas that had been identified where we could provide support. So, one of these areas, for example, was assisting in the Gallup area with the respiratory shelter early on last year and then providing some support with our partners locally in being able to have areas for individuals to be able to safely quarantine or isolate. And, you know, even later, some of the work that has happened with the Wellness Hotel and being able to provide support in that work. We also have been able to assist with some of the stores, the smaller stores across Navajo Nation, some of our partners within the programs and health facilities with the supplies that um are needed and being able to help to address those areas whenever we're able to fill some of those, those gaps. We've also been able to provide support for medical volunteers who have been able to support the health facilities across Navajo Nation and, and staffing up some of the resources there. So we've been able to provide that support so that those individuals are able to travel and assist with those health facilities across Navajo Nation. And the other area that we've been able to support under the guidance of the Incident Command Structure is around supporting the expanded contact tracing and the system that helps to enable that expansion in terms of the technology under the guidance of Navajo Nation. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Shin to be able to talk a little bit more about this work specifically.
Thank you. Uh, yat e she'hami she'eh. I'm a doctor at Gallup India Medical School Center and I'm also the lead for expanded contact tracing for Navajo Nation. And I wanted to just provide a quick overview of contact tracing. I know we talk about it all the time, but sometimes we don't actually really explain it very well. So just in a few minutes, you can see in this picture that the gentleman in the middle, let's call him Jane, John Doe, um, is a little bit sad because he has um just been told that he has COVID. And he might actually feel totally fine. He might actually have no symptoms at all. But what we know about COVID is that if he has been around other people for even just fifteen minutes in the last few days, those people could have caught COVID from that individual. So in this case, if he has been around three people in the past few days, um, it's possible that some of those people, for instance, in this case, two of them, could actually have caught COVID from him. And it sort of spreads um in that way, almost like a wildfire, because then those two people could spread it to the people in their homes or the people that they work with. So that's what we know about COVID. And the reason that we actually want to use contact tracing is because if we could just get in contact with John Doe right when he's been diagnosed and give him all of the information that he needs. Stay home, stay by yourself. Please don't have any visitors. Even if you normally are um seeing friends and relatives, please just isolate yourself. And if we can say the same thing to his contacts, we could actually prevent that spread of the COVID. For instance, if we could get John Doe and his contacts to isolate, like in this case, maybe all of the other people might not actually end up getting COVID. And if we could even get the contacts to isolate early, we could prevent COVID among them too. So in this case, contact tracing could have prevented, you know, at least um six infections just by getting in touch with those individuals in a fast way. So that's really why we believe contact tracing is so important. And I know we've heard this um from Dr. Jim, uh, from Captain Johnson, um, from President Nez, and everybody else, that there are many parts of the response to keep COVID from spreading and to make sure that we can move out of this phase even after vaccination. And um it's important to remember that we can't let our guard down. Even after vaccination, CDC says that we should always be using all of these tools so that we can stop the spread. Because even if most people are vaccinated, there can still be some cases um that could happen on the nation. And for those people, we want to make sure that contact tracing is part of the care that they're able to receive. So just a quick note about um what COPE is doing for contact tracing. Um, as Hannah said, we have been supporting a number of initiatives. And for contact tracing, we were really asked to make sure that there are enough people so that everyone can get a phone call in a timely way. And we've tried really hard to do that. You can see that we have partnered with many different um schools, like Dina College, ASU, ASTU, UNM. There is a group uh that has an AmeriCorps service program called Ancestral Lands. We have so many Dina volunteers that have stepped out um to help. And we've hired more than a hundred and forty people at COPE so that they can all be trained as contact tracers. And then what we do is of the different Navajo area sites, um, the list that Captain Johnson provided, for instance, any of those hospitals and facilities can reach out and request uh for help. And we will assign contact tracers to all of these places. Uh, this is a list of all of the hospitals that we have supported uh to date. And so those contact tracers would then report to the public health nurses, to the case managers at those facilities, and support the contact tracing um by making those phone calls. And I think it's important to remember that, you know, contact tracing makes a difference not only because we're able to stop the spread, like I was talking about with the case of John Doe, but we're, the contact tracers also connect families to resources like food and water, firewood, medications, and cleaning supplies. They're providing emotional support, which is so important because anyone who has been on isolation and quarantine knows it can be very lonely. It can be very lonely to not have the visits that give you that emotional lift. And so having that phone call every day from somebody who genuinely cares about you and is asking about your wellbeing is very important. And we're always asking, how do you feel? Do you have any new symptoms? Because certainly if somebody has a symptom that might be concerning, um, our callers are trained um to make sure that they're connected to care. So we really believe that contact tracing is an act of love and it's a way of caring for each other in this community. Now, I wanted to share some information and this is from the Gallup area where the vast majority of contact tracers are supported through the COPE initiative. And in this region, eighty-six percent of um the people who have COVID have been successfully reached and interviewed. And ninety-two percent of the contacts have been reached as well. And we have a sense that almost thirty percent of the families are actually connected to home resources and five percent are call um connected to emergency care either by calling nine-one-one or having um a home visit as quickly as possible, working with the CHRers. And I just wanna mention that these numbers um really, and Navajo Nation as a whole, really reflect very, very good performance compared to other places in the United States. So I'm very honored that we're be- able to provide um this support to our um, to our hospitals, to our healthcare providers, and also to the Navajo community. And I really hope that we can continue to be strong and not let down our guard even as the case rates go down. Um, our team is on standby. We're always um helping the schools, the business, um, the businesses. We're helping with the um, any cases that are reported through the portal, uh, the exposure portal, uh, because we really want to provide as much support to all of the partners across Navajo Nation. So I'm going to close there and hand um it back to Hannah um to finish our, our presentation. I'm not sure if Hannah um has a stable connection. It seems like um there may be some challenges with the snow. Um, so maybe I will just um finish by stating that we wanted to share um some of the quotes from our contact tracers themselves. And I really am just so grateful for their passion and their dedication. One of the things that's so important is just giving hope. Um, Shania stated, "My work helped to fight off the helplessness that I felt." At the onset of the pandemic, "I wanted to help my community and, but nothing felt like it made a difference." "My work has been an avenue to channel my energy toward helping families and communities." Um, and then Christian Begodi provided this comment about how important it is to help his fellow community members. "I feel purposeful when I work, knowing that Navajo people don't have to go through this alone, that there's someone checking on them and guiding them on how they can keep their community safe." And I think Hannah might be back.
Thanks, Sonia. So the last couple of quotes we wanted to share from some of the team members really highlight how this has also been an opportunity for mentorship and support for the contact tracers as well. So Mariah, who is a contact tracer and a student at Dina College, had shared that "My work as a contact tracer has opened a new position for public health and a passion. It has helped me find my purpose. It gives me great joy when patients tell me that they appreciate my calls and all my help. I'm excited to continue my journey in the public health field." And another contact tracer, Sydney, had shared, "My work has made me more passionate about my career path and wanting to help make healthcare accessible to everyone on the reservation." So we've been so fortunate to have just a wonderful group of individuals that have been part of this work that really have a strong passion to provide that support and outreach in the community. So ach'ehat shet'natani to all of our leaders who have given us this opportunity to just share information. We're, you know, very grateful to have had this time with all of you. And um we're looking forward to the continued work and collaboration in our communities. Ach'ehat.
Hello, everyone. I just want to resume my presentation. Uh, as you know, we are having some internet connectivity issues today. Uh, thank you for that, uh, Sonia and Dr. Sein for uh sharing your information in regard to contact tracing. But I do want to uh resume the presentation in terms of where we are uh as a nation uh for preparations uh to reopen schools. Uh, please do make special note that I say preparations uh for reopening school. Uh, this is going to be a process uh going forward. So notating that Navajo Nation uh is in process with uh the review of the plan. Uh, there is new gating criteria uh that is being pondered by Department of Health. In addition to that, the new guidance that came down from CDC as well. Uh, so all of that information being taken uh to revise and review the Navajo Nation School Reopening Plan, which in itself is a process. We do have a couple of work groups that are currently working on that. In addition to that, uh, to safely reopen our schools requires coordination with other entities. In this instance, we are having a need to collaborate with the BIE facilities. Uh, part of the CDC guideline is to make sure that there are proper ventilation systems in place within the school setting for schools to reopen safely. And uh in years past, uh, we have knowledge at DODI that uh many of our facilities here on the nation uh have been on backlog, particularly with BIA, in bringing our schools up to code. So there is much work that must happen uh in collaboration with also Office of Environmental Health uh to also give approval for schools reopening as well. So many of these measures uh have to take place, as I noted uh at the onset of my uh sharing of information today, that many things have to work in tandem uh in order for us to safely guide uh schools in their reopening measures. Uh, lastly, uh, the tribal consultations also uh must take place so that we give the green light for schools to reopen uh so that we can assure that there are adequate safety measures in place uh within those local settings. So at this point, I just want to acknowledge the teachers uh who have worked really hard. Uh, it's almost been a year now since we have migrated to uh online learning exclusively. Uh, much work has had, had to happen on that. And we have undergone extraordinary experiences during COVID-nineteen nationwide, that can be said. Uh, however, uh, here on the nation, uh, you know, we all need to stand together. Uh, as has been mentioned by previous uh presenters here, that we need not let our guard down. Uh, we need to continue to uh provide for safe uh measures for uh everyone, the entire citizens here on Navajo Nation. Uh, we've had to uh probably the uh i- in history, uh, the most rapid change ever uh in the education field uh when we migrated to online learning. Uh, so the decision-making that has to take place, as I notated, is that it must be based on science and on our local data. We must assure safety for students, teachers, and the families to whom they return to at the end of the day. And that, that there is a process to do that. The work that must still happen is paramount. We must le- listen to the teacher voice and then also the local stakeholders as well. So within these tribal consultations that are underway, we are asking schools to provide parental input. Uh, as they have surveyed their parents, what is the input from the parents? What about the teachers? We must maintain the trust of our communities uh as we safely uh reopen our schools, which require a safe environment and all the work that must happen uh to, to that end. We must empower our school leaders uh by way of providing resources. Uh, and we at Department of Dina Education will do our share by continuing to have a revision of the Navajo Nation School Reopening Plan uh that best meets the local information here. Uh, so we will continue to make that available through our weekly contacts with our school leaders. So to that, I just want to uh say thank you. Uh, parents, thank you for being patient with us. We know that you care sincerely and deeply about your children. And we want to make sure that the, the schools are safe uh before we uh give the green light for schools to reopen. Meanwhile, we are on on-learning format uh for the full uh second semester of school. Uh, if there are any questions that anyone has, please do not hesitate to visit the Department of Dina Education website for contact information. Send us your questions and your comments there. Uh, to this, I want to uh say thank you to all the presenters today and thank you to all the uh callers uh for joining the conversations that took place today. Ach'ehat, aro' da'adah'ahlia.